The time is now 6:01 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE ISD to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is now 6:02 PM. The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. A reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and to take action from recommendations from the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore, lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. I would ask everybody to stand for our pledge of allegiance and salute to the Texas flag.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Moving on to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Brown, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. You know, our UMBLE ISD Education Foundation is celebrating their 25th anniversary this school year, and that just means 25 years of empowering educators by fostering innovation in the classroom. So tonight's inspiring moment video will tell the story of the foundation and its impact on UMBLE ISD and our classrooms.
This year marks a significant milestone for the UMBLE ISD Education Foundation. 25 years of making an impact in our schools and our community.
The foundation provided my classroom with tools. Drones is what our tools are. We're taking the resources and we're turning it into a real tangible, measurable, life-changing event. It's a really big deal. What the foundation is doing is changing lives.
The foundation's journey began in 1999 when a group of visionaries, parents, and community members came together to unlock new opportunities for students. Their mission was simple, to inspire innovation in the classroom and empower educators.
You can't even name all the things that the Education Foundation has done for so many teachers here.
Oh, my God!
Our grant was really to help these students get the tools that are necessary to be actually efficient and grow in the food service industry.
The whole hands-on experience in the commercial kitchen has really been exciting. It's something I do want to pursue in the future.
For 25 years, the foundation has been committed to fueling creativity and supporting innovative ideas in the classroom. From prize posse grants to mini-grants, our UMBLE ISD Education Foundation has been a steadfast supporter of lifelong learning.
I want to get my kids the best equipment and the best experience that they can have while they're here in high school, so that way if they do choose to go off into college or into the workforce, they are as prepared as possible.
What the Education Foundation has done for my classroom has transformed, completely transformed, the way I even think and the way I act and the way I do things in my classroom because I have tools that have enabled. It's opened doors for me as a teacher in my profession to start thinking bigger, dreaming bigger, and doing different things.
They do so many amazing things for the district and for the teachers, from the $250 mini-grants to the big prize posse grants. It's really amazing.
Our science classes don't have access to water, so I wrote a grant so we can get a mobile water station for our science classes. So we won the grant!
Over the past 25 years, our foundation has had an incredible impact, funding 2,331 grants, awarding 935 scholarships and more, with the total investment of $19.3 million in UMBLE ISD. And this is just the beginning. With your continued support, our UMBLE ISD Foundation can keep dreaming, innovating, and changing lives.
Thank you to the foundation for dreaming big and thinking big and be that leader for our education community that's providing those tools that can help us provide futures for our students.
Thank you for finding donors that want to help us, because there's more that I can give these kids through the Education Foundation than I can give out of my pocket. And so, I thank you, and I'm grateful.
So just a huge thank you to our foundation. Obviously, you can see the impact that it has on our teachers and most importantly, our students, and so we appreciate that. And congratulations to all of them for celebrating 25 years of incredible, incredible work. So I think, Jerry, you're up next, but Jerry and your team, would you stand the foundation team? Let's give them a hand for the work that they did. Thank you. So I do want to introduce Chief Community Engagement Officer Jerry Monbaron to share with us the annual report from our Education Foundation.
Who happens to be celebrating her 25th anniversary today with UMBLE ISD, so thank you very much for that applause. That was very sweet of you.
That's awesome.
The foundation does have a report to share, but with sincere love, let me say, I'm going to let you hear directly from the horse's mouth. I'm going to invite the current Chair of the Education Foundation and the past Chair of the Foundation, Deborah Rose Miller and Dr. Calandra Purvis, and you'll hear directly from them.
Some thought Jerry was just turning 25 today, so we weren't going to clarify that, but she did. So, as Jerry said, I'm Deborah Rose Miller. I've been blessed to be the Chair for the past two school years, and my job tonight is to get to brag about the foundation. You already saw that video, so it makes my job a whole lot easier, but I'm going to drill it down to just what happened this past school year and then a little bit more into the big picture. But the key to our success, I believe, has been the fact of the great collaboration that we have. Obviously, the staff, but also the Board. We've got some single-mindedness. As Mr. Jabowski knows from working with us last year as our liaison, this group is focused and dedicated. And so I'd like to, we've already recognized the staff, but we need this rock star staff to stand again. And also, we have our Board members here. I'd like for them to stand, for you all just to know who's behind some of this. And the third component that makes this all work is, of course, our sponsors and our donors, who are behind what we're doing for the students and for the teachers. So that trifecta has really allowed us to have the kind of results that we have. So I'm going to give you, drill down for 23, 24, I'd probably need a drum roll for this. Where's the students going to need them? So for this year, we raised 11.5% more than we ever have. We raised $2.6 million. 2.6. No wonder we're tired, right? It was an amazing year. So what does that mean to us? Let me break this down a little bit, and you'll get to see that on the slides. So we began the year with our first of our two grants, for the mini-grants. We awarded $68,000 for 286 mini-grants. Now, this is a program that I believe now is in our second year of doing these mini-grants when the school year starts off. And what's great about this is not just teachers, but it also includes support staff. You'll get to see a few here. And I believe in the right-hand corner is our cafeteria manager at Hidden Hollow, Caroline Kaminsky. I'm going to kind of focus on her tonight to give you a little snapshot. Her grant, she wrote, "My goal is to provide a welcoming environment for our students and staff. I want people to be happy when they come into the kitchen to get a meal or a snack. I am passionate about child nutrition because a hungry child cannot learn." So at the end of the school year, Ms. Kaminsky wrote back to us saying, "Students told us they loved spotting the new decorations, especially the gnomes." You see the gnomes up there? Winning this grant showed me the support staff, that support staff are not unseen," which I think is a key. So this was a $250 grant. I mean, what is it worth to be able to show our staff of how they're kind of supporting what they can do for our students? So this is kind of an example. And then in May, you saw a lot of the pictures of our prize posse over the years. This past prize posse, we gave out $279,000 for 82 innovative education grants. And our awesome Foundation Communications Coordinator, Kiana Rios-Camp, she goes out and does videos for each of these various projects that we have. So when you go onto the Education Foundation website, you can not only pull up the report that the trustees have, but you can also see these videos. And the directors are used to me saying, "We are the sunshine and lollipops of the school district." Well, if you go onto those videos, it's going to make your happy place. Really worth checking out because they are amazing. And then in addition to that, in May, May is a big month for us, we have our student scholarship banquet. We awarded 316 scholarships this year for $324,000. Now, just for a clarification, we don't raise funds for scholarships. We're kind of the pass-through and the organizer. So thanks to all of our various foundation partners and our various community partners, we're able to give out these scholarships. And we offered four-year university, two-year college degree, and trade school. And the cumulative number to date is a million dollars, a little over a million dollars in scholarships. So you can kind of see just a few of those there. So those are just some of the ways, as I said in the video. There's other things we do. We give scholarships to educators. We assist schools in raising funds for their annual campaign. And then we also have specific grants that are given that we're kind of the pass-through for. So if you add all of that up, for the 23, 24 school year, we are giving you a check today for $1,465,000 that the foundation has given out as of June of this year. That's a 10% increase over the previous year. And as you saw already in the slide, that's 19.3 million in our 25-year history. I don't think you're going to find too many education foundations smaller than us, certainly larger than us, that have that kind of track record, so we are very proud. Now, that is definitely worth a clap. So there's a few math whiz here, so I know Billy's probably already done the calculations. So I mentioned we had 2-point-something at the beginning. We gave out 1.465, so we got about 1.2 million unaccounted for. So what that represents is 30% of what we raised net goes to our endowment, which is right now at about 2.4 million. Our goal is to get that to $5 million, and that's our legacy. That's the future that the foundation has there. And our goal, when we get that to the 5 million, is to be able to use that interest for even further projects that the school district needs. So you can help us with that this year because we're really promoting that hint, hip. So the foundation, the endowment, and then also we have funds yet to be distributed. We also have certain expenses for our events. And our revenue this year, our expenses was only 7.3%. So that is something most nonprofits would covet for sure. So it was a very amazing year. And before we take our big ceremonial picture, I want to bring up Dr. Calandra Purvis, our current Chair.
Thank you, Deborah. Yes, I truly share in the pride of the work that the foundation has done, so thank you so much. Beginning in August, our foundation has embarked on a year of long celebration for our silver anniversary. Along with the annual report, we've placed at your seat a 25th anniversary pin. We hope that you wear this pin with pride as you travel through the community. Everyone get their pin? Yes, okay, all right. Thank you to those who came out to kick off our event two weeks ago. We were at Lone Star College, Kingwood. The purpose of this event was to start our celebration by saying thank you to the 150 community members who have served on our foundation board and, I'm sorry, who have served on our foundation board and our current and former school board members for their many years of support. So thank you, school board members. We recognize that our foundation wouldn't be successful in fundraising if it wasn't for two critical components, a working relationship with our Board and our leadership here in UMBLE ISD, and the employees of UMBLE ISD. So thank you so much for your commitment. Our community sees the excellence in action from high-quality education that our children receive. My children are a product of UMBLE ISD, and so as I look around the room and look at the leadership that serviced them at the schools, thank you very much. I appreciate your hard work. We know that when our community supports our foundation, they are demonstrating their support of our teachers, our staff, and our leadership. So a very special thank you to UMBLE ISD for the great job that you do in giving our children, our students, an educational experience that paves the way for success in life. We look forward to celebrating this anniversary all year long. And our next fundraising event is our employee giving campaign, which is in full swing this month of October. We're always grateful for the long and for the big ways that employees step up each day and participate in the giving campaign. I would like to invite, at this time, our President of the School Board, Chris Parker, Dr. Brown, our superintendent, our board liaison for the 23, 24 school year, Mike Grabowski. Our community engagement team, thank you so much for coming up, and our foundation board members. At this time, we're going to take a picture, and we are going to present a check for 1.4 million dollars.
Well, first of all, we want to thank everyone that was here tonight for the foundation, our community support, the Board. It's just amazing the work that you all have done over the years, and so thank you so much. All right, so tonight is special as we celebrate our Elementary Teachers of the Year. And so we've got a packed house of elementary teachers. All right, so Ms. Kristy Herb, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, and Ms. Stephanie Davis, Director of Elementary Education, will now approach the podium and introduce our Elementary Teachers of the Year.
Good evening. We're honored to recognize the following 24, 25 Elementary Teachers of the Year. From Atascocita Springs Elementary, Drew Ortner. From Autumn Creek Elementary, Jasmine Thomas. But wait, Ms. Thomas is also being honored as a district finalist, the district teacher of the year, and a finalist for the Region Four Elementary Teacher of the Year. From Bear Branch Elementary, Kelly Ann Means. From Centennial Elementary, Brianna Boston. Deerwood Elementary, Wendy Curtis. Ms. Curtis is also being honored as a district finalist. Eagle Springs Elementary, Tracy Reynolds. From Elm Grove Elementary, Vicky Servati. From Fall Creek Elementary, Aromi Fernando. From Foster Elementary, Savannah Bridgewater. Oh, Ms. Bridgewater couldn't make it, so we'll make sure we get her her award. From Green Tree Elementary, Paula Russell. From Groves Elementary, Gloria Bennett. From Hidden Hollow Elementary, Lauren Jaeger. From UMBLE Elementary, Colleen Todd. From Jack Fields Elementary, Kiara Brantley. Now, I would like to welcome Stephanie Davis to the podium to introduce the rest of our amazing 24, 25 Elementary Teachers of the Year.
Good evening. I am honored to recognize the following 24, 25 elementary teachers of the year. From Lakeland Elementary, James Lindsay. Mr. Lindsay is also being honored as a district finalist. From Lakeshore Elementary, Carrie Benavides. Maple Brook Elementary, Sarah Feskey. Ms. Feskey is also being honored as a district finalist. North Bend Elementary, Anna Gonzalez. Oak Forest Elementary, Sherry Dunlap. Oaks Elementary, Diana Sanchez. Ms. Sanchez is unable to be with us, but we would get her lovely award. Park Lakes Elementary, Demaris Rodriguez. Pine Forest Elementary, Jocelyn, there we are, Jocelyn Gregory. Ridge Creek Elementary, Nicole Collins. River Pines Elementary, Natalie Harris. Ms. Harris is also being honored as a district finalist. From Shadow Forest Elementary, Casey Fetzer. Summerwood Elementary, Marlene Alvarez. Timbers Elementary, Broderick Lindsey. Whispering Pines Elementary, Ashley Fort. Willow Creek Elementary, Carrie Christopherson. Mrs. Christopherson is unable to be with us tonight, but we'll get her the award. From Woodland Hills Elementary, Jackie Young. And last but not least, our wonderful Leah Coleman. She is from our Early Childhood Center. Okay, so at this time, we're going to take a group photo. We're going to take lots of photos, but we do want to let you know, these wonderful ladies who we are honoring will probably need to get home. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, that is correct. That is correct. Thank you so much, team members.
Pardon me, Madam President.
Ms. Lamond Dixon.
I would like to ask the Madam President if she would, if she will take a point of privilege and allow us to make our board comments and comments by the administration, and then have public comment so that we can congratulate all of our teachers and the other people in our audience today.
I would, but I think these fine, wonderful people want to go home. They have to get up. And we have super staffers right now. So, thank you. Dr. Brown?
All right. Thank you, Madam President. And again, congratulations to our Elementary Teachers of the Year. What an amazing group. And so, now, the celebrations continue as we have our staff members that go above and beyond. Ms. Jerry Monbaron is going to come forward and introduce us to our super staffers.
Thank you. So, our Umbel ISD employees do go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping Umbel ISD great. So, each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a super staffer. And then, from this list, we have selected three honorees to receive additional recognition at the board meeting tonight, and then some goodies, thanks to an award sponsor. And this month, Super Staffer Awards are sponsored by Comcast. So, I'd like to invite Joy Randall with Comcast to come up front to help give out the awards. And could everyone join me in thanking Comcast for the support? Okay. So, you can see in just a minute on the list of employees, yep, so, there you go. Perfect. On the list of employees nominated for our elementary schools. And from this great pool of awesome employees, we would like to shine a light on our Umbel ISD Super Staffer tonight, which is the Behavioral Interventionist from Groves Elementary, Amy Rodriguez. So, joining Amy, if you'd like, up here is her principal, Angela Bland. So, let me tell you a bit about Amy. She is making a fantastic impact as the new behavior interventionist at Groves. Her background as a first grade teacher allows her to connect with students on a personal level, and her proactive approach of visiting classrooms has really helped her to build strong relationships with them. She is super responsive to teachers who need behavior support and has revitalized the Kinesthetic-Based Learning Lab. She introduced a new behavior support system to enhance student engagement and ensure progress is documented effectively. It's uplifting to see the positive responses from our parents, who are singing her praises for her caring and supportive approach to students. We are so glad to have her on the Groves team. Congratulations. Here is our list on the screen of our secondary school nominees. And I'm excited to recognize as our Umbel ISD Secondary Super Staffer tonight, the Principal Secretary at Autumn Ridge Middle School, Tamika Hagerty. Tamika was a little extra surprised tonight because in addition to her principal, Ms. Rosalyn Swett, who's in attendance, it is also a fan club of all of the instructional coaches at ARMS that are going to be here to welcome her up to the front stage. So, Tamika was with ARMS when it opened in 2022 and is a major influential employee supporting every department and team on the campus. She provides training for our district and campus staff, recognizes staff for special occasions, supports stu- students in and out of the classroom. She's also a resource and a go-to person for other campuses and needs, and stands out as a leader in our district. Tamika arrives early, stays late, and invests countless hours to ensure that Autumn Ridge is prepared for students and staff to have a great day. It is no surprise that she's been selected as Paraprofessional of the Year for the past two years. Her efforts and hard work are recognized by everyone who knows her, and we are so happy to see her honored today. Her fan club. Okay. You're welcome. Congratulations. And now, we have the list of nominees from departments and locations other than campuses. All of these individuals listed are Rockstar employees, but tonight, we are given a special recognition as the Umbel ISD Support Super Staffer to Jennifer Winter with the Umbel ISD Police Department and Emergency Operations. And Chief Kikazari up at the front waiting on you. So, with safety and technology as her top priority, Jennifer provides assistance to support their staff with all their technology needs. She takes pride in ensuring our police radios, reporting system, dispatch terminals, department cameras, and building technology systems are always in working order. She is always willing to share her experience and expertise to help others succeed. She has gone above and beyond the normal duties by making herself available throughout the day, evening, or nights to ensure our technology is up and running. Jennifer provides outstanding service, and we are so fortunate she is a part of our Emergency Operations Team. Congratulations, Jennifer. You can go up there and stand next to him. It's okay. So, he'll know that you're coming. Thank you. Congratulations.
All right. Madam President, that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comment from citizens of the district or from district employees. Any, anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so following the procedure outlined in the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than two minutes. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for today's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint procedures that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or by their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the Umbel ISD website. The first person signed up to speak is Stacy Watson. And if I could get Kristy Ford, Scott Ford, and Denise Mears to come forward and sit in these seats in the front row.
Ready?
Ms. Watson?
My name is Stacy Watson, and beside me is my son Liam Farrell. We are here tonight to address a serious and painful issue, the recent indictment of child abuse by a former Umbel ISD Special Education Teacher, Amber Reynolds. In January, Amber was charged with felony injury to a child for her actions against a special needs student in her class at Pine Forest Elementary.
I'm sorry.
It is public information, and then, the case is over.
Ms. Balding? My apologies.
Thank you. If there is, if she is just reporting on public information, then there is no objection. I just didn't want it to get further down and then have to cut you off.
Thank you.
Thank you for just reporting on.
Sure. Just a few weeks ago, on September 25th, she accepted a plea deal that unfortunately reduced her felony charge to a misdemeanor. While she did admit to causing bodily injury to the child, the justice served feels wholly inadequate when considering her actions. Liam was a student in Amber's class in 2013, 2014. While at Summerwood Elementary, when in her classroom, she subjected, subjected my son to acts of cruelty that are unimaginable, she would excessively drag him across the classroom, belittle him with words like, "You're a piece of crap," slam him up against a wall, hold him down on his stomach with her knees in his back to the point of near suffocation at one incident. Liam also suffered a busted lip courtesy of the bottom of her shoe. She would fabricate offers referrals to note Liam's injuries to justify the marks or bruises he sustained during these incidents. Child Protective Services found reason to believe that my son had been the victim of abuse, but the lack of overall cooperation and cooperation by teachers and administrators forced the grand jury to dismiss our indictment in my son's case. Teachers did not want to comply for fear of retaliation by your district or even job loss. Cowards who wouldn't speak out because they were told it makes your district look bad. Liam now carries the weight of severe PTSD recalling vivid memories of Amber's cruelty. He has been irreversibly changed by her actions and her care, and that change has and will haunt him for the rest of his life. As a child, every time an Amber issue, Amber Alert would be issued.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Watson. Ms. Watson, would you like, would your son like to speak? Ms. Ford and Mr. Ford, would you mind if he spoke first? Mr. Farrell?
Hi. My name is Liam Farrell. First, before I say anything, I want to give appreciation to two teachers. Well, one is the principal now at the Early Childhood Center, I believe is how it go, is what it goes by, is Amanda Price, I believe, is the correct name. And the other teacher is Vera Adams, who retired last year. Back in 2013 and 2014, I was abused by Amber Reynolds in the same way that this child endured a couple months ago, about almost a year ago. And I believe that if those teachers during that case weren't scared to speak out or lose their jobs, that wouldn't have happened to any child. And I don't believe it was just me or that child that it happened to. I believe that there are many other children in your school district that this has happened to. And it is a shame for that to happen to any child under an adult supervision, especially under the court of law. It's, it's horrible. I've, I've never, I've never seen something more disgusting than that. As an adult, you're supposed to protect a child, not harm them. And that woman harmed me, and that woman harmed another child. And it should never happen again. God, this timer's long. Sorry. My name's Liam Farrell. I'm 18 years old. This happened to me 10 years ago. Have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Hello. I am Kristy Ford. I am a teacher at Timbers Elementary and ITF Plus certified, and I'm here to talk to you about Certober. I want to thank Carolyn Finley, Cynthia Cueros, and the rest of the staff at the ISC for being amazing hosts. We all enjoyed being at your facility. Your staff took care of us, and we wanted for nothing. I found coffee cups every day. And then, we also, I would like to take Kristy Herb, because she came by and checked on us while there were other trainings going on, see if we needed anything. I want to thank very much Melissa Lee for checking on us the first day of training to make sure everything was working and we were ready to have a fantastic training. And I really want in my classroom, can I have some of those computers where you hook up and you can have the screenplay on all the walls and the document camera from the ceiling? The support of the IT certification program has been outstanding and truly appreciated. During the break, we had 60 students from middle school, high school, faculty, staff, and community members attend and give up their break for the whole week to work on their IT Fundamental Plus certification. We had ITF Plus certified students working on their A-plus come as TAs who assisted answering questions and demonstrating hardware during our hardware unit and passing out supplies, and just as being assistants and learning how to teach others. To just say, this was, event was a big success. Starting on Thursday, we will have participants sitting for their exams. They are ready, and they're chomping at the bit. So, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we will be at school, and he will be offering certification sitting exams. And I put a challenge to the students who are working on their A-plus, as I am working on mine, to see which one of us is getting certified first and who can make the highest score. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Mr. Ford?
All right. That was a nice Ford. Now, I'm up. So, about a year ago, actually, pretty much a year ago, in October, I brought up the question about Schoology, asking, I thought, a very fair question, which was, let's have a conversation about Schoology. It's reviled by faculty, staff, parents, kids. I thought this was an easy thing to go. I also thought the fact that just class action lawsuits against a parent company would bring this conversation to a head. So, I was excited when we started forming committees, especially the Technology Committee. I figured, hey, we can actually finally get some conversations going. And I emailed everyone on the board about two months or so ago, asking them to populate the committees, and also the Technology Committee, with school admin, faculty, staff, campus techs, call support, desktop support folks, folks who are in the trenches, who deal with the, the decisions being made. I don't think that's happened. Well, we have had IT issues left and right, and I don't blame the IT staff. They're dealing with the decisions as much as we are. But we have Go Guardian, which we had, then we got rid of, and then we brought back, and that's not working right. We have teachers entering grades from Schoology into Tac. Yesterday, I went up on the naughty list because my grades weren't uploaded because Tac wasn't syncing with Tac. We have an AP teacher who has the students go to AP class. That's blocked because apparently you can't spell "class" without "ass" in it. Who knew that? I've had websites blocked, whitelisted, blacklisted, whitelisted, blacklisted. So, my question to all of you are, and this is not just Mr. Holmes, and thank you, by the way, for answering my, my thing on Facebook. Your committees, do you have people on your committees that are not making six figures? Do you have teachers, staff, faculty, people who actually know what's going on on our campuses? And if not, why not?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Ms. Mears, and if I could have Ms. Powell and Ms. Ferenbacher and Juwanda Handy come sit in the seats in the front row, please. sit in the seats in the front row, please.
Good evening. My name is Denise Mears and I am the founder and executive director of Project Protect Our Children. We are a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit whose primary mission is to prevent child sex trafficking, exploitation, and abuse through proactive community engagement, preventative educational programs, awareness, and empowerment opportunities. I am here today to ask for your support and assistance in expanding our youth action board program that was first launched at Kingwood High School in 2020 to the remaining UMBLE ISD high schools and middle schools. The program is available at no cost. The Youth Action Board is a student-led, anti-human trafficking school club program designed to engage, educate, and empower today's students who want to become part of the solution in the fight to end human trafficking. Utilizing the power of youth voice, the program's student-led approaches leverage students' creativity, their energy, and peer influence. Human trafficking campaigns and events and activities that are created and championed by the students can reach and impact their peers at a level that no others can. By raising awareness, students will contribute to a culture that actively works to prevent human trafficking. Human trafficking is the second largest criminal industry. It is the fastest growing criminal industry in the world and is one of the most challenging for communities to recognize, address, and often happens in plain sight. We firmly believe in the power potential of youth to lead the change. We are now in our fourth year at Kingwood High School. Since its launch, Kingwood High School Action Board members have been recognized by the Attorney General's Office, by the Governor's Office, by Congress for their efforts to raise awareness on their school campus. In addition to those awards, we are a Presidential Volunteer Service Award-certifying organization, and we have been able to award 15 Kingwood High School students with the PVSAs. We would love to provide this, the same opportunities to all students in UMBLE ISD high schools and middle schools. And so we ask if you could please help with your support and assistance.
Thank you, Ms. Mears. Ms. Powell?
Good evening. I'm here today to advocate for transparency and integrity in the proceedings of my later scheduled Level III grievance hearing tonight. I moved at the Board and forced immediate recusal of Robert Scarfo and Michael Grabowski from participating in this hearing as they are named respondents. According to Board Policy, BBFA Local, in addition to legal disclosure requirements, a Board member shall disclose to the Board any personal, financial interest, business interest, or obligation or relationship that in any way creates a potential conflict of interest with a vote in a pending matter. Furthermore, the policy explicitly prohibits Board members from employing intimidation tactics or promising preferential treatment to influence Board or district decisions as well as lever, as well as from leveraging their position for personal gain. In the context of the Level III grievance, both Mr. Grabowski and Mr. Scarfo pose a personal interest in the outcome of the hearing as they are named respondents. They are obligated to disclose this conflict of interest to the Board in accordance with BBFA Local policy. The failure to do so not only violates established ethical standards, but also jeopardizes the fairness and transparency in the grievance process. In light of these substantial conflicts, it is imperative that both Mr. Scarfo and Mr. Grabowski be recused from any and all matters in which they hold a personal interest in the outcome. Their continued participation not only violates established ethical standards and Board Policy, BBFA Local, but also undermines the foundational privileges that govern UMBLE ISD. I urge the Board to issue an immediate ruling enforcing their recusal from all matters in which they have a personal interest in the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Ms. Ferenbacher?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Ferenbacher and I'm here to support my daughter, Larissa Powell. For weeks and months, she's been requesting transparency and justice for the parents, children, and patrons of this district. Larissa, her daughter Isabel, her son Ben, and her husband Rodney have all addressed the Board concerning issues that affect UMBLE ISD. Last month, Isabel spoke at the meeting about the dress code and other issues. She was followed by a man who ridiculed and harangued her for her comments and her speech. Larissa's brought forth issues to you like the injustice of views concerning our diverse community, the health clinic issue which would serve parents and children, which was wrongly believed to promote gender-affirming care and birth control, the numerous incidents of bullying that parents have sought Larissa for help with, the non-professional handling of employees in the district, Facebook posts from parents about the deplorable condition of the AG barn. I've read how children were unsafe walking to school as there was no bus transportation for them. Teachers posted on Facebook they wish to house and implement programs for more technology and lamented the ability to use equipment that was already purchased. I've heard and read how Mr. Ford used his own money to educate students in the computer certification on his own time. But what I think is most despicable is the amount of money this Board has spent on numerous law firms and lawyers that could have been used on teachers and educational programs for children. I believe the Board used these funds for their own interests and not for the district that they were elected to serve. Since we now seem to have an in-house lawyer hired, I hope he doesn't face the same treatment as Mr. Newman and Ms. Morrow. I wish the many outsourced lawyers this Board continues to hemorrhage money to can cease and desist. We will no longer need to pay hotel, transportation, and meals for lawyers who travel to Houston.
Thank you, Ms. Ferenbacher. Thank you. Um, is it Ms. Handy?
I'm not good at speaking in front of people, but I came here to ask the question, when will the dismissal route of Timberwood Middle be fixed? I was in an accident yesterday because of the way that it's directed down Timberwood, um, Timber Forest to Otuscaseta, and it's basically messing up the traffic. And I've even been told by the police officer that took the statement that he's lost three patrol cars before in that same section. I have a suggestion, maybe they can move the route from coming out of the front of the school to where the buses come out, because it'll direct it down Timber Forest versus into the intersection. And then we have plenty of kids walking in front of vehicles. There's not always a person right there to walk them across or anything. I have elementary kids, elementary school, they're on it. They have cones out there sectioned for the walkers so that there's no traffic moving when those kids come out. So I'm not understanding, why doesn't the middle school have some kind of tactics to protect them as well? So that was my question. We just need to redirect that traffic to make it safer for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Handy. Um, Amy Jolly, uh, Ms. Natalie Carter, if you, if Natalie Carter, Holly Hamm, and Keisha Walsh could come and sit in this front row, please.
Hi, I'm Amy Jolly. I'm here with Denise Mears tonight from Project Protect Our Children. I work as the liaison, the educational director that work with schools, district, and our educational service centers. I walk alongside our school sponsors to implement and launch a youth action board in whatever capacity makes sense for each campus. Texas is doing great work and ahead of many states with Senate Bill 9 requiring education of human trafficking, and our UMBLE ISD curriculum department has done a wonderful job of making sure we're meeting all of those state requirements. But we do feel this need is so great that we want every secondary school empowering the kids and protecting students beyond just what the state requires. The World Health Organization published a report in 2022 on what works to prevent online violence against children. The 70-page research report found that the most effective methods involve repeated exposure, peer engagement, whole school integration, pair caregiver, peer, parent, and caregiver involvement, and interactive, skill-based focus. Our student-led, research-based, trauma-informed youth action board program accomplishes these goals. Some of our student outcome and opportunities are to, that they can define and identify human trafficking, recognize the red flags, assess and avoid vulnerabilities, learn to actively engage safely on social media, understand healthy relationships, how to report concerns. They build their leadership skills and communication skills. They're empowered to problem solve and address gaps. They can earn the Presidential Volunteer Service Award and earn scholarships as a senior. As a former educator, I know firsthand how limited teachers' time is, so the program has been developed on an easy-to-rollout online platform for the club sponsor. We, the program is free, and we also reimburse the club sponsors $750 for their time. I'm asking for your support and assistance connecting us with secondary campuses in UMBLE ISD to identify campus sponsors so that all students have that opportunity to increase their protective factors and be part of the solution to fight human trafficking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jolly. Ms. Carter?
Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, today I advocate for transparency and ethical integrity as we approach an important Level III grievance. I fully support Ms. Larissa Powell in her motion for an immediate recusal of Mr. Robert Scarfo and Mr. Michael Grabowski from voting on matters in which they have a conflict of interest. Specifically regarding Walsh and Gallegos' vote and the grievance hearing that we will embark on shortly, as they are named respondents. Board Policy, BBFA Local, unanimously approved on July 23rd of 2024, states that Board members must disclose any personal or business interest that create a potential conflict of interest. This policy not only requires disclosure, but prohibits members from leveraging their positions for personal gain. Given that Mr. Both, Mr. Grabowski and Mr. Scarfo have a vested interest in the outcome of this hearing this evening, they must recuse themselves from any related votes. Ignoring this policy undermines the fairness of transparency that's essential to the grievance process. Previous claims by Mr. Scarfo and Mr. Grabowski suggest that disclosure was unnecessary. It is now clear, based off of your vote in July, that they are obligated to disclose their conflicts and step back from participation. To maintain the integrity of our Board and this community and the grievance process and the standards in which UMBLE ISD is founded upon, I urged a Board to enforce their immediate recusal from all matters where they hold a personal interest. This action is vital for restoring trust and credibility throughout our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Ms. Hamm?
Good evening. My name is Holly Hamm and I have two serious concerns to talk about this evening. My first concern is about misinformation. On the afternoon of September the 26th, I learned about a threat of shooting up the school, and this is Kingwood High School. That evening, at 7:44 PM, an email from KHS Principal Dr. Nasworth stated that, quote, "We cannot substantiate a threat at this time," unquote. That evening, my husband and I discussed whether to send our son to school the next day. We did not err on the side of caution, and maybe we should have done so. So I felt uneasy all that next day. The school day fortunately concluded with an email that nothing happened. And so this was at 3:15, and the principal stated that it was all misinformation. So I followed up with an email asking for facts. His response was, quote, "You have misinformation." I replied that the threat was real, right? That, why was there an investigation? And my questions went unanswered. This is not acceptable. When parents have questions, there needs to be answers without violating privacy. There was a threat, and we as parents in the community need to know what happened. When there's no response, it leaves parents in the dark. No response means you have something to hide. My grave concern here is that there is something to hide from parents, from students, and the public. My second concern is a rise in human trafficking. You heard from Ms. Mears, you heard from Ms. Jolly. If you listen or read the news, most likely you'll hear about a crime that is either directly or associated with human trafficking. And for the greater Houston area in which we reside, this is the worst of any city in America with the highest reported trafficking cases. So right here in this school district, there's a program called PPOC, Project Protect Our Children. It was founded and it deserves our attention. Their work saves lives. Trafficking is rampant, and our children is the target of these criminals. And so let's bring PPOC to all the high schools, let's bring him to middle schools, because it can save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Is Keisha Walsh here?
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Brown. I presented my concerns to the Board back in June regarding the UMBLE ISD softborn. I appreciate the fans, the students appreciate the fans. When parents address concerns for our students, we expect those jobs to be done thoroughly, not halfway, not patched. Three weeks ago, to be exact, I walked into the barn and we did request that the panels, the metal panels in the steer barn be replaced. My son's steer, his head was stuck in between the gate. His tongue was hanging out. He was foaming. There's no safety mechanism to jack up the metal gates to release a animal. The agriculture teacher, Mr. Taylor, from Otuscaseta had to leave Otuscaseta with a heavy-duty jack to release my child's animal. Imagine my child getting out of school only to find out that his show steer is deceased. I presented my concerns to the Board. I've also emailed Mr. Wilson and Ms. Lee. However, apparently the students at the UMBLE softborn are not important. My concerns at this point, after receiving a phone call because my son is African-American and the only African-American student in the steer barn, now he's being retaliated by his teachers and members of the CTE Department that handle agriculture. Today, I'm speaking up. I hope that each and every Board member can make sure that our students at the softborn have the same equal learning environment. However, I'm also letting everyone know, should my child be retaliated against or discriminated against, I will seek legal action.
Thank you. Um, next we have comments by individual Board members, and I'll begin with Ms. Lamont Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank all of the public commenters who came out today. Um, and then I'm going to circle back to all of the celebrations that we had earlier. So congratulations to the Teachers of the Year for the elementary schools and for the superstaffers. Hope everybody had a wonderful fall break. Um, so many different events have happened since our last Board meeting, so I'm just going to touch on a few of them really quickly. One that's near and dear to my heart is the 25th anniversary of the UMBLE ISD Education Foundation. So glad to have you all here today and thank you for that really large check. Very excited about that, especially since prior to school board, I served on the UMBLE ISD Education Foundation Executive Board as the Finance Chair. So, and did a lot of different things. Prize Posse was always one of my favorite days. So thank you so very much. And I just have to say, you know, I'm going to segue from there to the parade. The UMBLE High School Homecoming Parade, I'd like to thank Mr. Cosby for bringing that back. Had a wonderful time judging the parade along with Dr. Brown, Mr. Hicks, and Brittany Metag from KNS, who was here earlier. Another soft spot in my heart for UMBLE High School, and I'm going to talk about Dr. Calandra Purvis, who's our Chair of the Education Foundation. Way back in 2012, before school board, before Education Foundation, actually, you know, UMBLE High School didn't have a PTA way back then, and called some friends, Dr. Purvis over there and Ms. Shepherd, and we decided to go to the state and reinstate the UMBLE High School PTSA, and it's still going strong today. So a lot of work for many years in UMBLE ISD. And really, I guess the last big thing for me would be, we had, well, there's two things, one more, hold on. Chief, where's Chief? He stepped out, he's not back yet. So we had the 30-year anniversary celebration of the UMBLE ISD Police Department, which was huge. And Chief Cook has actually been with the UMBLE ISD Police Department for 29 of those 30 years. It was a wonderful celebration and very excited about that. So the last thing that I wanted to mention is the mosaic building groundbreaking. So the last thing that I wanted to mention is the Mosaic Building groundbreaking. Such an amazing event. It has been a long time coming. We've talked for many years about having such an amazing facility. I'm just really thankful to be a part of the board during this moment when we had the groundbreaking. We had two awesomely amazing student speakers, Ella and Nico. Truly enjoyed getting to know them. The celebration was really, really wonderful. And then I guess the last thing, I know I said the last thing already, but Dr. Bonnie Longian at the UMBLE ISD Education Foundation event announced that she's going to have a scholarship and just wanted to point that out since she is one of our former school board trustees and former school board president. That is all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Lamont Dixon. Mr. Holmes, did you have anything?
I just had a few things. One, I believe, Dr., Mrs. Holmes, I think you probably are the only two left from the foundation, but if you could carry this back to the team, you continue to set the bar. And thank you. I don't know if I'll be coming to this year's Prize Posse. The only reason is I cry too much. So seeing teachers literally cry over the money that is able to support the students that they love, that is why, part of the reason why I do this, but you guys are really doing the work and driving those dollars. So again, to continue to just raise the bar, 19.3 million is amazing, 10% growth year over year. That's fantastic. So again, thank you. Teachers of the Year, what more can be said? I again will always say this and believe it. I wish I was rich enough to pay teachers what they deserve. UMBLE ISD Police Department, yeah. Chief, one of my longest-standing people I've known since I moved. He was one of the first people I met when I moved to UMBLE, I think 25 years ago. So again, to the Police Department, to Chief, to the team, thank you. The Mosaic Building, you know, so I was traveling, I was out of town for work, but you know, I got my shovel. And so I'm really happy about the Mosaic Building and I want to thank the community for voting for us being able to build this structure, which is going to definitely help. Every single one of our superstaffers, along with Comcast, I just want to say thank you. I want to take the time to just say thank you to Liam Farrell and his mother. Liam, especially, 18. Standing up there takes a lot of courage, so I just want to say thank you, Liam, for your bravery. And I think that leads into almost even the Project Protect Our Children. I'm a big advocate against human trafficking. And again, what was already said needs to be shared again. Houston is the number-one hub, I know, in the United States in terms of human trafficking. So I would always support that endeavor for Project Protect Our Children. I work with a couple of other organizations that focus on the same thing. And then as far as the Technology Committee, I'll provide a few updates during my committee updates on technology and some of the challenges. But I do want to say thank you to Chris Cummings and his team. They are doing a fantastic job in terms of trying to stitch together with very little in terms of what they need. So this is why the Technology Committee was formed, to really help drive further support for you. So again, thank you. That's all I have.
Without objection, I'll go next, if that's all right. Our community is grieving the loss of a legend, Mr. Andy Wells. Mr. Wells worked at UMBLE High School, UMBLE Middle School, and was the founding principal of Kingwood Middle School and is most recognized for being the founding principal of Kingwood High School. Mr. Wells was my high school principal. He served as the principal at KHS for 20 years before retiring in 1980, 1998. Sadly, Mr. Wells passed away on September 17th. A celebration of life will be held at 2:00 PM on Saturday, October 26th, at the UMBLE Civic Center. I know the service will be very special. In fact, students like me who attended Kingwood High School will attend. There will be singing at the service. Thank you for keeping Mr. Wells and his family in your prayers. In a separate topic, you can see that I'm wearing pink because October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Part of the reason Breast Cancer Awareness Month has become so well-known is that everyone knows someone special who's been impacted by breast cancer. According to the American Cancer Society, one in eight women will develop breast cancer in their lifetime. Breast Cancer Awareness Month encourages screening, raises funds, and shows support for patients and survivors. I want to commend all of our UMBLE ISD student groups doing activities for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And Mr. Grabowski?
Well, good evening, everyone. The problem when you follow Ms. Lamont Dixon is she covers everything you want to go. So I do have two other things, but I want to do say thank you to, and congratulations. When you're Teacher of the Year, you get an award by your peer. I'm not sure there's a better way to be recognized in society than when your peers say you're the best. So the Teacher of the Year and the superstaffers, I was going to talk about the Education Foundation and of course, the Chief Cook and their 30th anniversary. But the two other things I want to talk about, one is a really kind of way out there, no pun intended. Anybody get to see what SpaceX pulled off this weekend?
Yes.
It's phenomenal what robotics are growing to in this district. My wife came home from second grade, second-grade teacher, sorry, and she goes, hey, what happened? Because she had robotics class after school yesterday. So I brought my rocket in. It's the only thing I had in my house that kind of was like a rocket. But it took off. You've got to go on YouTube or wherever you go get your videos. This thing takes off, the capsule where the astronauts will be someday, leaves and goes land, after going around the Earth a few times in the Atlantic Ocean. This thing comes all the way back and lands on the launch pad. That's robotics. That's what our kids are going to be capable of. And this capsule, I guarantee you, Elon Musk, that's coming in, it's going to land right next to it when they're done flying in it. Our kids someday, that today played on the kindergarten playground, are going to take off in a rocket at 7:00 in the morning, blast off into space. Five minutes later, it's just a huge gas tank that comes down and lands. They're going to go around the Earth a few times, and at 5:00 at night, they're going to land. And they're going to look at each other and go, you know what, I'm hungry, me too. And they're down in Boca Chica, Texas. They go, what do we want to go eat? Where else would they eat? Whataburger. I mean, that's what's going to happen to our children. Robotics is amazing. And teachers, thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do to these kids' minds. Now, the veteran part of me. Couple of events coming up. The first one is on the 2nd of November at Atascocita High School at 10:00 AM. We have a chance to really help kids discover another opportunity, that being the military. One of my missions is to personal growth of the junior ROTC community. And we're going to have an event where we're going to have a stage on the football field at Atascocita High School. I volunteered to be up on that stage and then I found out who else is going to be up there, meaning the junior ROTC cadets are going to lead a group of people out in the field in a military-style workout. And I'm thinking, boy, it's been about 50 years since I did one of those. But then, I don't think you chickened out, have you, Dr. Brown? Because you offered to be out there with me.
I have not. In fact, I checked on our workers' comp today.
That's a good move. Good move, doctor. But also up on that stage, leading the, I was going to be the junior ROTC cadets is a veteran, a war veteran, Navy SEAL, and Congressman Dan Crenshaw is going to be up on that stage with those kids. What a memory of a lifetime when you think you are 15, 16, 17 years old, as young as 12, and you get to do a workout with all of that. You know, Dr. Brown and I bring that way down. We recognize that, but the Navy SEAL does not. So that's what's going to happen. And we're going to have a little surprise also from the 158th Attack Helicopter Battalion out of Fort Hood. We're going to have a helicopter, we think. We're pretty sure, right, Mrs. Mount? Okay, she said so. That's going to come and land somewhere on that, we think, the practice, another practice field where the helicopter will be secured and the kids will be able to walk out, touch it, sit in it, take pictures, talk to the crew. I guarantee one of those minds of one of our students is going to be changed that day and is going to down a good path of joining the military and becoming a great citizen of this great country. That's on November 2nd, 10:00 AM, Atascocita High School. Everybody is welcome. Everybody's welcome. If you're going to work out, though, you have to be 13 or older to be on the field for the workout. On the 9th of November at Kingwood Country Club, another great event's happening, Wounded Warrior Carry Forward 5K Run. In fact, I didn't know you were going to be here, Jason. Can you raise your hand, please? Because this is the gentleman that's coordinating that run. So it's, you can see it in UMBLE ISD, the UMBLE ISD news that comes out every Friday. The link is on there. You can sign up. If you don't want to run, please donate. It's $50 for an adult. It goes to wounded warriors. It goes for one of the greatest causes out there. So please, please, please be involved. It's going to be a fun run. It starts at 10:30. Registration, 11 o'clock, off we go. 5K, so somewhere around 4:00 in the afternoon, I'll finish. But when you do finish, it's a run-walk. Some people are going to try to carry their army buddy. People will be pushing baby carriages. I mean, it's a community event. So if you're interested, please, you don't have to be a member of the club. And on both of those occasions, our Arnavard from junior ROTC is going to post colors to get the recognition they deserve as we try to grow up junior ROTC. And then they're going to post colors at a very formal event on the 10th of November. So three times, we're getting them involved here with a up-and-coming Veterans Day celebration. So thank you all very much. Welcome back from break. And that is all, Madam President.
Mr. Kertjoufer? Mr. Sitten?
Thank you, Madam President. So I too want to congratulate all the Teachers of the Year. They don't get enough praise for what they do going into the classroom every day. It's been 30, 30-something years, I'm not going to date myself, since I was in the classroom. I don't know if I could do it today. They do a tremendous, tremendous job and I thank them every day for what they do. Foundation, great story. And you know, the foundation's dear to my heart as well. I began my pursuit of giving back to this community in the school district by serving on the foundation board. Helped develop the endowment and the investment policy statement before moving over and running for the board, school board. And my wife has been serving on the foundation board, I think, 13 years. This is my 14th year on the school board, so I think 13 years for her on the foundation board. So you know, we're pretty vested in this program and what they do. Jerry, you and your staff have done a fantastic job and I've enjoyed working with y'all all these years. I'm going to finish with this. This past weekend, we took, we volunteered to take a few students to San Antonio along with Kingwood Park and Atascocita High School's journalism programs. They ran the Fall Fiesta at San Antonio. And for the third year in a row, Kingwood Park came home with the grand prize, sweepstakes. That kind of caps off a tremendous four-week period. Atascocita won quite a few awards, too. I don't want to slight them. Their program came from, came from a long way back several years ago and Ms. Klosterbor and her group at Atascocita is doing a great job there as well. But in September, the KP Times, school newspaper, was honored as one of only 10 public school newspapers in the country to win a Gallup Award. They are doing tremendous, tremendous things. Megan Ortiz, she was given, I'm going to get this wrong, I'm sure, but I think she was given the Trailblazer Award this weekend for what she does for student-led media. And she, I can't tell you the impact she's had on our family and my daughter specifically. And then I'll, lastly, well, no, not lastly, I said that a minute ago, happy birthday, Ms. Lamont Dixon. And I will finish with this. And Ms. Parker, I'm glad you brought up Andy Wells. I've known, I grew up with Andy's kids. He was my middle school principal at UMBLE Middle School prior to, our class was the one that was split and he left us and went to Kingwood. Andy was also a coach at UMBLE High School. He was one of the very first baseball coaches at UMBLE High School in 1970. So the Wells family has been very close to our family over the years. And if you can make it out, I guess it's in two weeks, is that right?
October 26th.
October 26th, at the Civic Center. And pay your respects to the family and honor a great educator and a great advocate for this community and for public education. Now I'm done.
Last but not least, Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I have no comments, other than maybe we should start to invoke a two-minute rule on board comments, too, because they're getting a little long. Thank you.
Our next item is comments by the administration. Dr. Brown?
All right, I will make these quick. First of all, I want to shout out to Chief for National Night Out. It was the first time they sponsored that at their place and it was packed and it was fun. Lot of families, a lot of kids, and so way to go. Chief and your team for that. Also to Mr. Phipps and Ms. Robin Poole and for the Integrated Athletics. If you ever get a chance to go to an integrated athletic competition, they have, what, four to five throughout the year? Mr. Phipps, the last, the first one was at Atascocita High. And what's so cool about it is the students at Atascocita High lined up in the hallway and you got the drums going, you've got the kids shouting, you've got the athletes walking down the hallway to get to the gym. Amazing. Kids in the upper deck. Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, it's really great. It is. It is. And so shout out to you guys for providing that for our students and their families. And so that's a great event. I do want to welcome Mr. Jeremy Binkley, our General Counsel. And he started with us yesterday and I said, hey, you want to come to a board meeting? And so here he is. And so, welcome. We're glad you're part of the team. And then the very last thing is, you know, I understand there's a report out that's being discussed about districts hiring uncertified teachers. And so I wanted to address that just a little bit and then I'm going to lean on Mr. Gardner here to finish us off here. We're a, the state allows what they call a District of Innovation. So we're a District of Innovation district, which allows us to look at some of the TEA regulations and say, well, we want to modify that a little bit for our community. And so that's what we've done. So we do have teachers that are maybe certified in their area, but they're not teacher-certified, like through a teacher certification program at this time. For example, Career Tech is one. So they're very knowledgeable in that area, but they just haven't completed a teacher certification program like a lot of us have gone through. And so we do have those, but that's part of the District of Innovation Plan that is allowed through the state. And then we have apprentice teachers that are working towards that teacher certification. And so I'm going to turn it over to you now, Mr. Gardner, if you can just take about 30 seconds and take it from there.
All right. So thank you, Dr. Brown. So back in 21, 22, late in the recruiting season, which runs from April to the start of school, we were hearing that other districts were hiring teachers without certification, given the supply-demand issue and trying to find teachers out there. So we were asking ourselves the question as to how are they doing that? Because we hadn't really heard too much about that. We quickly learned what they were doing, which was being allowed by the state. So we began strengthening our bench by also hiring teachers with a degree and having them enter an alternative certification program if they weren't already in one and giving them at least two to three years to get certified. That first year, we, and again, it was a late scramble to get a job fair pulled together. Dr. Brown was with me, opened it up to the community, who would like to, you know, become a teacher. And so we had several sign up and got them through the pipeline. We also established them to start at $55,000 a year, thanks to the board of approving that in the compensation package. And once they got certified, then they were raised to at least the entry, which was about $60,000 plus, like other teachers, at zero year. Today, we have about 175 of what we call apprentice teacher and earning their way to become a certified teacher. And as Dr. And as Dr. Brown mentioned, the other aspect here is the District of Innovation with regards to trying to fill some of those hard-to-fill areas in CTE that allows us to do that. These are just a few strategies, recruiting strategies that, of many others, to try to get us, by the time school starts, to at least a 95% fill rate in our teachers. And I want to say that this year, we were able to, with a hurricane and being closed as well, able to fill our teaching vacancies by the time school started at least 99%. So we'll continue those efforts and try to look at new ways to get out there and find as many teachers as we can.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Moving on to our next agenda item, action items from closed session. Item 4A, Personnel Recommendations. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approves the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Mr. Scarfo. Any discussion? All those in favor? Item passes 7O. Item 4B, Student Expulsion. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
Yes. I move that the board approve the administration's recommendation of student expulsion as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Mr. Scarfo. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries 7O. Moving to item, to item 5A, our consent agenda. Item 5A, Approval of Minutes for September 10, 2024, Regular Meeting?
Pull.
Item 5B, Approval of Minutes for September 26, 2024, Special Board Meeting? Item 5C, Approval of Goods, Professional Services and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually?
Pull.
Pull.
Item 5D, 2024, 2025, Construction and Construction-Related Purchases? Item 5 Consent? Item 5E, Bond Fund Transfers and Amendments? Consent? Item 5F, Budgetary Transfers and Amendments? Consent? Item 5G, Tax Refunds? Consent? Item 5H, Board Authorizations of Inter-Local Agreements? Consent? Item 5A, Approval of RFP 2021-006R-15, Educational Service Consultants? Consent? Item 5J, Approval of RFP 2025-105, Awards and Promotional Items? Consent? Item 5K, Approval of RFP Number 2021-009-18, Restaurants and Catering? Consent? Item 5L, Approval of RFP dash, sorry, RFP Number 2025-102, Athletic and Physical Education Equipment Supplies and Associated Services? Consent? Item 5M, Approval of RFP Number 2023-103, School Safety Products and Services District-Wide? Consent? Item 5N, Approval of RFP Number 2021-003-21, Supplies, Equipment and Services for Students with Disabilities? Consent? Item 5O, Approval of RFP Number 2025-11, Tree Removal and Stump Grinding Services? Consent? Item 5P, Approval of RFP 2025-101-57, Transportation Fleet Services Maintenance and Services District-Wide? Consent? Item 5Q, Approval of RFP Number 2025-104, Custom Apparel and Accessories? Item 5R, Approval of RFP Number 2025-12, Pool Chemicals and Services? Item 5S, Resolution Authorizing A Petition For Annexations, Annexation Of 2.4 Acre Tract In and Around Lakeland? Consent? Item 5T, Change Order, Multipurpose Rooms, Group 3? Consent? Item 5U, Approval Of New Course Offerings At The Middle and High School Level For The 2025-2026 School Year? Mr. Holmes, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Sure. I move to approve consent agenda items 5B and 5D through 5U.
I think there were two pulls, right? Or three, or two?
Yeah, 5A and 5C were pulled.
5A and 5C were pulled. Okay, let me restate that, then. Yeah, I move to approve 5B and 5D through 5U.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries 7O. Returning to pulled items, our first item pulled was item 5A. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the amendments of the September 10, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Ms. Lamond Dixon. Any discussion?
Yes, I pulled that because I was not here, so I needed abstain.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six, six and one abstention. Mr. Holmes, returning to any pulled items, our first item, or our second item was item 5C, Approval of Goods, Professional Services and Non-Construction Services Exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the CH listing of vendors and estimated annual costs for contract awards and renewals for the purchase of goods, professional services, and/or non-construction services that are estimated to exceed $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually for the 2024-2025 fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Grabowski?
Yeah, I co-pulled this. One of the contracts was arbiter-pay, the trust account, that $100,000 was originally approved by the board with a $400,000 estimated increase, which is four times, so now we go from $100,000 to $500,000 for a new revised total. And I had spoken to Mr. Beatty about this. If you could give us an explanation why that it was actually a reshuffling of the money, not necessarily an increase in cost.
Sure, yeah. So arbiter-pay, this is something that I'm personally excited about. It's a software that helps us manage small vendors. So in this case, we pay a little over $500,000 a year to officials for sporting events. And it equates to a little over 800 individuals that we're paying. Over 3,000 individual invoices that we're entering for all of those officials. And so there's, there's a lot of hidden costs there with all the administration setting up every individual, processing every one of those checks, payments, scheduling them to work all of those events. And what this software does is allows us to be more efficient. So the payments process through this system. It does the 1099s through that system. So it's going to save internal staff a lot of time and effort, and I think it's a streamlined things for our officials, too. So I think they're going to appreciate this service as well, just from checks, reissuing checks if we, you know, get things wrong, or having to update one of the over 800 officials' information, things like that. I think it would be a much more efficient process. So that $500,000 that we used, that we have been paying officials directly, we're just moving that over to this arbiter-pay system so we can pay directly from arbiter-pay.
Thank you.
Mr. Sitten?
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to pull this because of an item. I did send an email with no response, wanting some clarification on increasing Walsh and Gallegos' contract once again. The last time we voted to do this, I asked, "Is this for current expenses, future expenses?" And how in the world are we continuing to justify giving them more and more money every time we turn around? I don't know what the total figure's going to be, but we're getting close to $2 million at this point to one firm. And, I mean, I've been pretty steadfast on this one. I have voted against every dime that we have increased Walsh and Gallegos for about a year and a half now. I think they are part of the issue that we're running into, and I'm not going to be bashful and shy away from saying that. I've said it time and time and time and time again, and here it is, one more time, buried into an agenda item. We're increasing their, their estimate by another $350,000 for a total annual expenditure of $650,000. I don't get it.
Anyone else? Mr. Holmes?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to ask for a point of clarity as well. Is this increase for past work, current work, or future work?
Mrs. Lamond Dixon?
I have the exact same question, because we haven't been given any information on why there is an increase.
Well, there's additional work. So anybody further?
Can I ask? Could we request, I mean, I'm hoping there's not a future increase, but in situations like this, I feel like we should get itemized information as a board to have a clear understanding of what we're approving or not approving.
Mr. Scarfo, did you have something? Anybody further? Mr. Holmes, did you have something?
I, just to double-click on what Ms. Lamond Dixon mentioned, I know at one point we were getting itemized invoices, and I know it stopped. I don't have a problem with if we need to increase it, I just would like to know why. And that's, that's all I'm asking. We're not getting those itemized invoices like we used to. It's been a few months, might be several.
Mr. Sitten?
So the question is, and I don't know who can answer this, is this for potential future work, or is it for bills that have already been submitted that need to be paid?
Okay, so my understanding is this is for work that has been completed. So when we're paying the invoice for the attorneys, there's so much money in the account, and so when that starts to run low, we ask for the transfer because we know there's going to be future invoices coming in as well in order for us to be able to pay those invoices. So it's a little bit of both. It's for work that, and invoices that we've been receiving, and we know we're not completed. This process hasn't completed, and Walsh and Gallegos is still doing work for the district. And so we need money in that account to be able to pay those future invoices as well.
Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, Ms. Parker, I'd just say this. I mean, a claim that over $2 million has been paid to Walsh and Gallegos for work they've done directly is not accurate. The payments have, for all the other law firms, have gone through them. So, and, and there hopefully will be a detail as to expenses that will be available, from what I understand, that everyone be able to see what makes up all those pieces, all the different Title IX investigations, PIA requests, hearings, all of those things. And I think when that's laid out, we'll have a better view of, of the specifics. So I would wait to see that. But again, just because there, that firm is listed there doesn't mean that all money's over the course of this last 14 months, I'm going to say, has gone to their coffers, if you will. They are the conduit for the investigative firms, the Title IX coordinator, the decision-maker firm, and all the rest. So that's how, that's how it's played out. And that's how I understand it from when I was, you know, serving as chair.
And what I would say is, everybody at this table knows that we are in the midst of ongoing matters involving Walsh. So whether the money was for past work or work that you all know will be completed in the future, I would say that we need to transfer. Mr. Sitten?
Again, I, I sent an email asking for an explanation. Had I have gotten that, I probably wouldn't have pulled this. I'd have still voted the way I'm going to vote, but I probably wouldn't have pulled it because I'd have gotten my answer. But following the rules and reaching out ahead of time to get answers and then not getting answers really, quite frankly, pisses me off. And so if we're given an agenda and we're given plenty of time to ask questions, every board member up here should be allowed the professionalism to get an answer. So, and furthermore, we're getting billed by Walsh. We're paying Walsh. What Walsh does with that money, as far as paying other vendors, other attorneys, other law firms, is that's contracts that they have. We're paying Walsh, and Walsh is billing us. Now, when we get those invoices, we can see the paper trail, where money's going, and this, that, and the other, yes. But at the end of the day, you don't see any other attorneys on here, you see Walsh. And we're increasing Walsh's amount again, and I asked the same questions the last time we did this, because I didn't get an answer or an explanation when I asked for it ahead of time before the board meeting.
Ms. Lamond Dixon?
And, well, one point that Mr. Scarfo actually made, that when you said, like, we should be getting an itemized statement, I think that is the point that I know I'm trying to make, that I would like to see itemized information before we are voting on increasing, again, for additional legal services. Yes, I know that they are, that they are working with us. I know we have ongoing things going, you know, going on, but it's kind of like construction, right? We have change orders, we get detailed information, and it's a separate vote, actually, on exactly why we have a change order that is increasing the amount that we're paying a contractor. I think since this particular one is always very touchy, and if we are not receiving anything itemized anymore for some odd reason, I think that we need to get that. I think that's the question. Why can't we get itemized statements? Personally, it can be a part of a group, like it is here, but I actually would prefer the legal to be separate, so that we can see all of the details, just like we do change orders, and then we can vote with competence and not have questions. I mean, you're talking a lot of money that we're voting on, and we have no itemized information. We're asking questions, and we are the Board of Trustees.
Mr. Scarfo?
Yeah, I would just say this, to Ms. Lamond Dixon's statement about that, that we, they are, the invoices do come to the district, and they are looked at to be approved, and they have a detail as to what those expenses are for. I mean, I'm not proving to them now, because I have no reason to be, but in the past, you know, I saw them last year, when I served as chair, and I'm just going based on that, that I'm sure that's continued. And again, this is, as Dr. Brown stated, this is moving money to that account to where those payments are being made for services already rendered. And there are, there is one main, well, actually, two investigations that are wanting their way to the, to the end, that are ongoing, so there'll be additional charges. But to say that, or try to paint it as if this one firm is getting all this money, and it doesn't matter that they've hired these vendors that we've needed them to hire, it does. And that's how it's worked, and there's nothing magic about that. And, and we should be able to have a breakdown from council to see where, as I said earlier, I don't want to repeat myself, it's already 10 to 9. But that's, that's where, that's how it's been, and that's where it's, it's gone, and there's nothing that's not transparent about. And there's nothing that's not transparent about it, there's nothing magical about it. And there's no, there's no secrets because we're not going to make payments as a district that aren't backed up by invoices. And those invoices have come and they've been detailed. And actually, I think many have been released in PIAs. I mean, redacted to some extent, but, so there's nothing to hide and nobody's trying to, to hide anything as far as those things go. But again, I'm speaking from past experience as to how I've seen it work, and I think it's continuing to work the same way. So, I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Lamond Dixon?
And I would say I believe that is true. I, I just think with Walsh and Gagos, they're technically working for us. So, if they send an invoice to the district, the administration should send us the itemized information because we are voting on making the increase or not. That, that's all I'm asking for.
Mr. Scarfo?
I would just counter then, you know, where do we draw the line there? Are we going to ask them to send us invoices of every vendor that sends expenses that we're, we've approved amounts to be, to be paid? I don't know that we need to get that deep in the weeds. If this is because of the, this particular high profile, if you want to call it that, you know, that's fine. But like I said, I think they will be able to provide, or the district will be able to provide breakdowns of, because they've asked the different legal firms to categorize where all the, that money went, like how much was spent on this particular Title IX and, and this Title IX, and, you know, this other investigation, and TEA, TEA complaint resolutions, all those things. So, I think they'll have that for us. And, but I mean, if you want to see those invoices, I don't think anybody would have, I mean, if I was sitting as Chair, I'd be happy for you to see them, any board member wants to see the individual invoices from any particular law firm, or any other firm for that matter. Because, you know, as you said, I mean, we have to vote and raise our hand to spend money. And I, you know, I, without getting in operations, and I don't try not to, you know, I don't want to be criticized about getting too deep in the weeds, so I try to say, say it arms length. But in certain situations, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with asking and seeing. And I don't think it'd be any attempt to, to block any board member from seeing detail for, whether it's Walsh and Gagos, whether it's ABC vendor, whoever it might be. I, you know, so that's, should be not a problem. Dr. Brown, am I speaking incorrectly there? No? Okay.
Well, and, and just to piggyback here with Mr., Mr. Scarfo, I, I agree with, with what you're saying. I just, I don't think it's in the weeds when they actually work for the board. They're not doing work for the district. Am I correct, Mr., Dr. Brown?
That's correct.
Okay, they're working for the board. So, to me, I'm, we're not in the weeds. We're talking about a, a vendor that works directly for the board. And then the other part is, I just, whatever invoice, we don't have to have them break it down by all of the different law firms or whoever they hired, that's not what I'm asking for. Whatever invoice they sent to the district to justify us increasing an amount, that's what I would like to see, since they are working for us. All of the other people listed here, I don't need to see any of those invoices because to me that is operations. And if I had a real question on one, I would ask in advance of the board meeting. But I guess, do you understand where I'm coming from, Dr. Brown? I'm not trying, honestly, I'm not trying to be difficult here. I just would like to see the invoice that justifies the increase that was sent to the district by Walsh and Gagos before I vote on it.
Okay, if that's, if that's the direction of the board, we can certainly send that out.
We have a motion on the table. But I mean, there, there wouldn't be one invoice, I don't believe. It's going to be a series of invoices that make up what's been expended so far that got us to the point where Mr. Beatty is, is telling Dr. Brown we need to move additional funds because they know what the invoices are, they're outstanding. So, it won't be just one that you would, that would drive something like this.
Or invoices.
Yeah, invoice, yeah. So, there'd be, you know.
And I, again, would just reiterate that everybody sitting at this table, we voted in public to hire Walsh. We know what the matters, the ongoing matters are, we all know. And until the, everything's settled, I mean, I would expect future invoices. So, with that, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries for three. There are no action items, so we will move on to the information items. Information Item 7A Intruder Detection Audit Report, Mr. Perkins.
Yes, ma'am. The Texas School Safety Center conducted an intruder detection audit pursuant to updated legal requirements. Eleven schools were reviewed since the last board meeting. Two findings were identified across all campuses reviewed. All corrective, corrective actions have been completed at this time, and further details has been provided to the board in executive session for the purposes of safety and security.
Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Item 7B Updates From Our Board Associations and Committees. First, the advocacy committee, Ms. Lamond Dixon?
Just a quick update, Ms. Monbaron and I are going to be meeting to kind of pull, pull together some things regarding the district's priorities and what the board is seeking. And luckily, I had a chance to talk to her, pretty much pull her in the hallway. I know that one of the items that is kind of swirling around in the construction department is an emergency management center that's north of Kingwood. And I know that we had a, a student, for instance, that was injured at Kingwood Middle School and the fire department came immediately, but yet the ambulance took almost 30 minutes. So, one of the first things I would like to do is to schedule a meeting with Dr. Brown, Commissioner Ramsey, City Council Member Flickinger, to, so that we can see if we could maybe partner together to figure out a solution so that, that does not happen north of the river, it's not happening south of the river. But when we call an ambulance and a student actually has to go to the emergency room, I think that we need to figure something out. And since we're all the stakeholders, I think that's where we're going to start. So, thank you.
Audit Committee, Mr. Kertschoffer. Building and Planning, Mr. Scarfo. Finance Committee, Mr. Kertschoffer. Safety Committee, Mr. Grabowski.
Nothing to report.
Superintendent Eval, we talked about tonight. So, Technology Committee, Mr. Holmes?
Yes, real quick, we have our first meeting coming up here this month. I'm super excited. There's several stakeholders within the district that'll be there. One of the things that we will be wanting to address are just the outages. Again, Mr. Cummings and his team addressed it today, I believe. Did that email go out today to the district? Okay, good. A lot of the challenges are due to the hurricane barrel and just the continuation of having to cut down trees which are, again, carrying that aerial fiber. So, it is causing the issues. But there, there are some other issues. And again, thank you for teachers like Mr. Ford. I'd like to say it publicly, I normally don't like responding to Facebook posts, but I thought it was imperative to just let you know, if you could, and, and tell your, your fellow teachers to just send that email to me over email, it's a lot easier for me to track. Not trying to shy away from anything, but we want to make sure that we get those issues addressed. So, again, I appreciate you speaking out, Mr. Ford, and I think there are a couple of other teachers. Again, send those emails to us, we're here to help and support you. Furthermore, with that committee, we're also wanting to look at, possibly looking at extending that to students and teachers also being a part of that. Don't know the cadence yet, it's something I want to build out and discuss again with the team, but I really want to make sure that we are touching in every facet of the business, whether that, for example, we're going to have the athletic director in this meeting. Well, how can we be utilizing technology to enhance marketing our students to universities, our athletes? So, those are the things that we also want to touch on, not just the problems and the issues from, from a technology standpoint, but how are we using technology to better student outcomes and things of that nature? So, again, I'm super excited. Hopefully, you'll have a little bit more, I'll have a little bit more of a, of an update next month for the board meeting.
And then I'm the Education Foundation Liaison, and y'all did a wonderful, wonderful job updating everybody earlier. So, thank you so much for everything you do, y'all are awesome, 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 awesome. Item 7C Report Of Management Fees Paid Under Cooperative Purchasing Contracts. Are there any questions or discussions from the board regarding this item? Item 7D Summary Of Report Of Emergent Bilingual Students In Umbel ISD. Any question or discussion from the board regarding this item? Our last item is Item 7E Financial Services Reports Is A Monthly Administrative Item. Any questions or discussions from the board regarding this item?
Madam President, if I could, I'd like to point out, next to the last item where it says ADA Enrollment Report, if you get an opportunity to really look at that, we're going to be providing that every six weeks. And as Mr. Beatty had talked about in the budget process, every percentage in attendance equals what, Mr. Beatty, as far as dollars? Because right now, we're running at almost 96% for this first report of attendance, which is way up from where we've been.
It's a good report.
It's a good report.
I told the principals, have you ever seen me excited today? This is me very excited. And it, we're up a half a basis point from where we were the first six weeks of last year. We've been leaving about $12.5 million on the table due to attendance, just, we've had low attendance since the, the pandemic. And where we're at right now, we have, you know, this is, this is first quarter of a seven-quarter game. We report six, six weeks of attendance to the state, and then we submit a summer resubmission, and that will be the final that we're paid based on. So, it's, it's very important, it's critical. We're over 1,000 kids ADA improved from our, our final for last school year right now. And if this trend holds up, it's, you know, this is early, but it, it could be, amount to more than $4 million, more than what we had budgeted this year for the operating budget. So, it's very good.
So, like a game, it's the end of the first quarter, we pulled the team together and said, man, you're doing great, keep it up.
Yeah.
And so, to Mr. Perkins and the Assistant Superintendents working with the principals, everyone has really put a, a big emphasis on this because it really does make a difference. And so, thank you to you all.
All right, our, our next item is going to be Item 8A Adjourned To Closed Session. If you are a cabinet member, employee, or you know that you're, you don't need to be here, go home and get some sleep and have a great night. But for the rest of us, a closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required, sorry, and any final decision or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is now 9:02 PM.
Ms. Parker, should you announce that this is for the parent grievance?
This is a, a Level III parent grievance. The time is now 10:09 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Item 9A Level III Parent Complaint Appeal Board Policy FNG. Mr. Holmes, do I have a motion?
I move to uphold the administration's decision on the Level III parent complaint under Board Policy FNG as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? So, the motion has been moved and seconded by Ms. Lamond Dixon. Any discussion? Mr. Sitten?
You know, there were a lot of things said that I've been pondering back and forth in my mind. I'm not an attorney, I don't know the law per se. So, I have to vote according, accordingly, based on what I believe and who I believe from a legal standpoint. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Anyone else?
I'd have to express the same sentiments. I'm not a lawyer. We had four lawyers in the room, asked several questions. Yeah, this is an, it's never easy, these grievances, and, but again, I do have to rely on legal counsel to help aid in the decisions.
All those in favor? Item passes 7O. Moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? Mr. Sitten?
Yeah, I brought this up a few months ago. I'd like to bring it up again for a conversation amongst the board members to see if there's an appetite on rebranding of Umbel Middle School and Sterling Middle School.
Is there an appetite?
Well, I mean, it's a discussion item. It's not something to vote on, it's a discussion item. I mean, is it something that?
Yeah, I'm just pulling the board.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I got you. Okay, I thought you needed clarification.
No, poll, a poll of the board, anybody interested in?
Madam President, I, I thought that wasn't part of a report in the past with construction?
Well, it was brought up as an item for future board business, and the, we polled the board and the board did not wish to discuss it. But I can, I guess I can't speak for my, can I, am I allowed to?
We shouldn't be deliberating, I think.
No, no, after that, I thought there was a comment from Building and Planning, a request from the city of Umbel that we were considering, that, that's, okay, well, maybe I misunderstood. Sorry, my apologies.
My understanding of, of what Mr. Sitten is requesting is that we, as a future board item, have an exploration of a concept of rebranding of Umbel Middle and Ross Sterling. As, I don't think we can talk about it. We have to, I mean, we can, we just poll the board if we can talk, then what, once it's an agenda item at a future meeting, then at that point, we can talk on it. So, is there an?
I don't, okay, I can't say anything.
Is there an appetite? Ms. Balding?
Can I not, can I not say?
This is not on the agenda. We can't talk about things not on the agenda. I, I know you probably want to make a point of clarification, but then we're getting into deliberation.
Okay, all right, I get it, but the last time when we voted, I won't say.
Do you need my legal advice on whether, what deliberation?
No, I'll just, after the meeting.
Okay. I mean, we could talk off to the side if you want.
I'm going to go to the Building and Planning to ask.
So, is there an appetite to poll the board? Is there an appetite to have this as a future agenda item, just to explore the idea? Okay, four, so yes, we will explore the idea. Are there any additional items? Mr. Grabowski?
Yes, Madam President, on the 9th of October, Chris Cummings, our Chief Technology Officer, sent out a very detailed email that explained a lot of the reasons why we have internet problems or technology problems in our district. And I would like an information item so Mr. Cummings can come up there and give that presentation so that the public can hear like we heard, or we read, and I will learn also more from it. I had no idea our internet originated in spring. It's a lot of issues that are out there that the public will have a better understanding as everybody else if we had an information item where it can be explained in detail.
Poll the board, would we like this as a future information item? All those in favor?
The Technology Committee was, we were addressing it, didn't go present, oh, that's where I can't say, we were going to, I was addressing that with him directly.
We can't really talk about it, is?
Yeah.
How many? Three? Just a second.
Three.
No, 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 I was, Mike, we'll talk.
Okay, is there an appetite for this to be an information item? Okay, we'll put it as an information item at a later time after. Okay, we'll put it as an information item at a later time after. Mr. Kertjoffe?
Yeah, I'd like to, the ladies that came and spoke tonight, can we, can Dr. Brown or you designate somebody to get the ball rolling and have discussions with them to maybe further, they've got it at Kingwood High School.
On that club?
Right. He already got it down? Okay, I just wanted to bring it up.
Anybody else? The time is now 8:16 PM. Sorry, I wish. The time is now 10:16 PM. This meeting is adjourned.